All right, everybody, can I get your attention, please? Now being 6 o'clock, we're going to call to order the regular meeting of the Town of Van Buren Zoning and Planning Board. Our regular chairman, Mark Bodash, couldn't be here tonight, and he drew the short straw. So, everybody, please rise for the next one.
You gonna sing?
Can I get a roll call, please? Let the record show that Mr. Virginia has texted, and he's running late. He will be here in a few minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review the April 8, 2025 meeting minutes? Do we have any comments on those minutes? Being no comments, the chairman will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 28, 2025, of the meeting of the Van Buren Planning and Zoning Boards. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have a few on the agenda tonight. We have a big crowd, and I suspect I know why. That is going to be one of our last applicants, or we're trying to move through the other applicants as quickly and efficiently as possible. So first is Andrew Whiting, 6929 River Road. This is an area variance. Please give your name and address into the microphone.
Andrew Whiting, 6929 River Road.
One second, one second, my fault. Do we need to declare lead agency on this?
So, this, the applicant is asking for an area variance for a fence for a residential, for a single-family dwelling. Under seeker, this is a type 2 action, which means there is no negative environmental impact to be realized and no further seeker is required.
Okay.
That's seeker.
So, we are going to go into public hearing. Give everybody a chance to comment. So, the chair will entertain a motion to go into a public hearing for Andrew Whiting, 6929 River Road, tax map ID 045 dot dash 01 dash 05 dot 2, and this is an area variance for a fence. Motion was made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in public hearing. If you'd please give your name and address one more time, and just briefly describe what you're trying to do.
Andrew Whiting, 6929 River Road. Trying to build a fence that closes, let's say, half of my property, just so I can let my dog free roam and not fear the dogs in the neighborhood. I am on a pitch of about 30, 40 feet, so it's a three-foot fence, and necessarily three foot at certain parts of the yard, and it would be an easily hurdled obstacle for a animal or a...
If you wouldn't mind, would you post your map up on the whiteboard there?
Sure. I don't know how to secure it.
Yeah, I know, it's not going to play very nicely.
Essentially, my house is here. I have an unused door here that I'd like to knock out. The fence would be about 12 feet up. This is actually the roadside, and this is the riverside, which technically is considered the front, and it'll just kind of be the front. Either way, I want to do about 113 feet of chain link fence here, 100 feet this way, 156 feet this way, 33 feet, and then just kind of at an angle of, looks like 150 feet there.
And the request is to have the fence at 5 feet, 5 feet tall.
Right.
Because you're on the river, we've determined that the zoning is that the, what you would normally consider the backyard is actually the front yard, and you can't have a flat foot fence in your front yard.
Correct.
So that's the variance request. This is the time for the members of the public to speak either for or against this proposal, if you would like to. If you would like to, just go up to the microphone, give your name and address, and you can speak either for or against. I'm going to ask one more time. Is there anybody that would like to speak for or against this proposal, this variance?
I'm for.
We would normally ask to give your name and address, but we'll note those positive responses. So, thank you for the presentation. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing for Andrew Whiting, 6929 River Road, tax map ID number 045 dot dash 01 dash 05 dot 2, for an area variance for a fence in the front yard. Motion was made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're back in regular meeting. So we've seen this, you know, for a couple months in a row now. Let the record reflect that Mr. Virginia joined the meeting. We were just talking about Andrew Whiting, James.
Captain.
So we have the fence. We've seen this several times. You submitted a map supporting what you're trying to do. We've asked for dimensions to be put on the map in scale. You did that. What I see looks complete. Does anybody on the board have any comments?
I would just note, for the record, that the town is in receipt of correspondence from legal counsel for the Canal Corp., that they are aware of this, and that there aren't any approvals that are necessary for Canal Corp. for this.
You want me to note that, or you're saying noting that?
You also submitted paperwork from adjoining landlords with no objection.
Yes, I was going to note that as well. We do have two to three letters from neighbors that are in support of the application. I'll ask again, any comments from the board? Being no comments, chair will entertain a motion to approve the area variance for Andrew Whiting, 6929 River Road, tax map ID 045 dot dash 01 dash 05 dot 2, for an area variance. And, hang on, let me get to my notes.
Mr. Schachterbach?
Yes.
I prepared a draft resolution for this one.
Yes, that's a good, thank you.
Mr. Schachterbach, there is a typo on the agenda. It's 5 dot 7.
It's 5 dot 7, got it. So I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution. Andrew Whiting, applicant of 6929 River Road, has applied for an area variance relief from Section 200 dash 72 of the Town of Van Buren Zoning Code relating to the installation of a chain link fence measuring 5 feet in height in his front yard. The property is located on the Seneca River and is identified as tax map 045 dot dash 01 dash 05 dot 7. Pursuant to Section 200 dash 49B of the zoning code, the front yard of the property is located along natural bodies of water, is defined as the area extending the full width of the lot between the principal building and the waterside property line. Section 200 dash 72B of the zoning code provides, on all lots, no wall, hedge, or fence over 3 and 1/2 feet in height shall be erected within the front yard. Accordingly, the applicant is seeking approval for the placement of a 5-foot-high chain link fence on his front yard. A public hearing on the application was held on May 13, 2025. During its deliberations, the board acknowledged that the topography of the property requires a higher fence to effectively and safely contain the applicant's dog, and that there are no site distance concerns presented by the proposed variance, and that the location of the proposed fence is not within the floodplain. Board received confirmation from legal counsel from the New York State Canal Corporation that no land use approvals are required from the corporation for the proposed fencing. No one appeared in opposition to the application. In support of the application, the applicant submitted an area, but an application for area variance, agricultural data statement, notification to surrounding property owners, a short environmental assessment form, job estimated prepared by Arrow Fence Company, and a survey prepared by George Vendetti Jr., licensed land surveyor dated July 19, 1989. Based on the foregoing, the board resolves as follow: This is a type 2 under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, as it involves the granting of an area variance relating to a single-family residential use. It is determined that the requested variance will not produce any undesirable change in the residential character of the neighborhood, and will not be a detriment to the nearby properties, as it was noted by the board, that there are no line of sight issues. Variance relief for the proposed fence will not have any adverse effects or impacts on the physical environment conditions in the neighborhood or district. Neighbors did not express any opposition to the variance. There is no...
Correct.
...apparent method to achieve the benefit of the applicant wishes to obtain, other than a variance, and the benefit to the applicant does not...
Does.
...does outweigh any detriment to the neighborhood or community because of granting the variance relief. An area variance is hereby granted, allowing a chain link fence measuring 5 feet in height to be situated in the front yard along Seneca River on property located at 6929 River Road, tax map 045 dot dash 01 dash 05 dot 7. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Sykes?
Yes.
Ms. Van.
That's still a motion.
Yeah, another motion.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Sykes?
Yes.
Ms. Van?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Bose?
Yes.
Mr. Virginia?
Yes.
And Mr. Schach.
Yes, and Mr. Bodash is absent. Motion has been approved. Congratulations, Mr. Whiting. Thank you for going through the process. You're all set. All right, next on the agenda, we have Northeast Controls. Do we have anybody representing the applicant? Please give your name and address into the microphone.
My name's Kurt Nichols. I'm an engineer with Delta Engineers in Vernon, New York.
Okay, for this, we do need to declare lead agency. All right, the board does declare itself lead agency, proceeding on an uncoordinated review. The matter is an unlisted action, and after reviewing the short environmental assessment form, does hereby render a negative declaration, finding that there are no adverse environmental impacts to be realized. End of motion.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, we need to do a public hearing on this one as well, okay? Chair will entertain a motion to open a public hearing for Northeast Controls, 7048 Interstate Island Road, tax map ID 056 dot dash 03 dash 03 dot 4. This is a subdivision and a site plan review.
Move.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in public hearing for Northeast Control. Can you give your name and address again one more time?
My name is Kurt Nichols. I'm an engineer with Delta Engineers out of Vernon, New York.
We need to give a brief explanation to the public what it is you're trying to do, and then we'll take comments.
Any controls is a regional, some regional notoriety on the production of control channels for wastewater treatment and water treatment facilities. They're very high-tech. It's a good industry. It's a good clean industry. They desire, it's a growing business, and they want to add on 180,000 square feet to their existing facility on Interstate Island Road. It will include a larger parking lot, and it would be a sprinkler building, and they need the space in order to make continued growth.
Very good. So at this point, we'll take any comments from the public that wish to speak either for or against Northeast Controls' proposal. Again, this is subdivision and site plan review. So if anybody from the public who wishes to make any comments? I'll ask again, is there anybody in the public that would like to make any comments for Northeast Controls for the subdivision and site plan review?
Chairman, move to close the public hearing.
Motion has been made to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made in second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, public hearing has been closed. We're back in regular session. So we do have a few things to do here. Jason, Mr. Hoy, have you reviewed the swivel to the property?
I have, stormwater metrics are adequate. I have a couple procedural things, but nothing to hold up approvals on.
Okay. All right, we have seen this again several times. However, for being thorough, we should note that we did have one very minor comment at the last meeting regarding the dumpster enclosure, requesting that we not use chain link vinyl slats, and we move to a vinyl enclosure. Otherwise, all the comments that have been made previous were addressed very thoroughly by the applicant. Does anybody on the board have any further comment for this applicant?
I think it was a great plan, great job, so thank you. One of the better presentations we've had in a long time.
Agreed.
All right, we need a separate vote on subdivision? Chair will entertain a motion to approve the subdivision for Northeast Controls, 7048 Interstate Island Road, tax map ID 056 dot dash 03 dash 03 point 4. As shown on the stamped and signed drawing, I have to get that out. Excuse me. Do you have a separate subdivision plan in here?
I do, I'm here.
Could you bring that one up, possibly? So, these people will be very patient, I'm sure. So is this the re-subdivision survey right here, actually?
Existing conditions apply.
There's a stamp. Yeah, I think you do have a copy here. Okay. I'm going to start again. The chair has shown to entertain a motion to approve subdivision for Northeast Controls, 7048 Interstate Island Road, tax map ID 056 dot dash 03 dash 03 point 4. As shown on the stamped and signed drawing, which is the label of lands of Northeast Control LLC.
I just have the existing conditions.
Okay. This is dated March 4, 2025. Combines the two parcels, and according to this map, total acreage is now 3.545 plus or minus acres, and it is stamped and signed. End of motion, or end of...
So move.
Did I give a date?
Yes.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The application for the re-subdivision has been approved.
Reverse subdivision.
Reverse subdivision, whatever you want to call it. So now we have a second motion for your site plan approval. Chair shall entertain a motion to approve site plan for Northeast Controls, 7048 Interstate Island Road, tax map ID 056 dot dash 03 dash 03 point 4. We have a few drawings on the site plan that we need to call out. So we have drawing C dash 01, C dash 02, C dash 03, T dash 200, C dash 201, C dash 202, T dash 203, C dash 204, C dash 301, C dash 302, and C dash 303. They appear to be dated March 18, 2025. They are stamped and sealed. I do not see any revisions on any of the plans. End of motion.
Does that include the new detailed drawing for the garbage dumpster?
It's a good comment. There is a new detail submitted for the dumpster. It is on a separate drawing. We will call it an amendment to the site plan. And it's a revised drawing for C 301 that shows the vinyl dumpster enclosure. It's got the same date and no revision. Probably should have a revision number on it, but we will submit this with the record as the enclosure that will be used.
So move.
Second.
A motion has been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thanks.
You're welcome. All right, we're moving fairly quickly. We do have a slight change in the agenda. We're going to move Patricia Palermo. She's seeking a special use permit. We're going to move her up the agenda. Should be a very quick one. Kind of in, out, hopefully make some referrals. So Patricia Palumbo, is there anybody here to represent the applicant? Is she not here? So I'm going to go ahead and move her to the end, see if she shows up. So, the next item on the agenda is Marion Garden Home, Town Homes, Van Buren Road. It's actually not Van Buren.
Ms. Palumbo?
No, I'm in the room. Good time.
It's all right. We had you at the end of the agenda. We moved you up, so it's all right. It's no problem. Can you give your name and address into the microphone, please?
Palumbo, located 7758 Maple Road, South Orange.
So your application is for a special use permit. You were in last month for a potential zone change. Can you explain, moving to do something else, can you just explain what it is you're trying to do, and maybe what the change was?
Yes, what we're trying to do is, I have a social daycare program and have a life center that's on the path, and we're going to do a relocation to Maple, and over to our Maple Road address to consolidate. And the reason, you know, why I would like to do that is that, first of all, the building is structured so that it's very, it's very nice setting for adult daycare program. The other reason is, obviously due to COVID, loss of AIDS, loss of income, we're trying to consolidate our costs and not pretty least rent us out, which is under the same.
Okay, if I recall correctly, you're operating under a special use permit now. We're just asking for, it's a change in use, so you're asking to amend that special use permit. We have to do a few things. First, we need to schedule a public hearing for you, and we also have to refer to county. So there isn't a whole lot that we can do tonight. We can have a small amount of discussion, I guess, but we've got to get the administrative stuff out of the way.
Okay.
So, chair will entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for...
June 10.
June 10, I'm being told. For Patricia Palumbo, and this is for 7758 Maple Road, tax map ID 030 dot dash 02 dash 23 dot 0. Currently in our 40 zoning district, 14 acres. She is asking for a special use permit to operate under a C 3 institutional and relocate her existing social daycare program to that facility. Can I get a motion in a second?
So move. Second.
Motion has been made in second to schedule the public hearing for, I already forgot, June 10, 2025. So you have to appear before us next time we'll do the public hearing. We also have to refer this to county. Do we need to refer this to county?
It's a state road, yes.
Okay. Do I need to make a motion to refer to county, or we just refer to county?
You don't. I'm trying to think if you typically do. There's no legal requirement.
You would think we would know after this many years, but we...
I know, right? I don't, no, you don't need to have a motion to do that, because jurisdictionally, you have to.
We will refer this to county. And will we have the comments back by next meeting? Anybody know? Nadine?
Their turnaround time's about 30 days.
Do we catch the right meeting?
21st, is that the next meeting?
Okay, so we'll have the comments back. I also, Nadine, I made a note, short form EAF.
Hold on one second. Their meeting is the 21st, but I think their deadline for submission was last Friday, the 9th. Okay. So there is the possibility, just so you know, if we miss, because of the deadline, it may not be back in time, depending on what their calendar is like.
So codes will reach out to you if the comments aren't back. We can still hold the public hearing, as you said, still may want to appear, but if we don't have the comments back, unfortunately, that kicks you to July, yeah, for our meeting.
We don't have a choice. By law, they have to, we have to give them 30 days, and we can't wait until we have it back. I'm sorry.
What about the, I made a note, short form EAF. Do we not have one?
I do not.
Codes, do we have a short form EAF for this? We do, okay. Okay, very good. Next meeting, we can do a whole bunch more, hopefully. I guess I'll open it up quickly for board comment. I don't know, we'll have much to discuss. Does anybody want to make a comment?
I think this is a much better remedy than the zone change that was requested last meeting.
Any other comments?
If the board wants, you can use seeker this evening before you send it over to county.
Okay, I'll give it a try.
This, too, would be an unlisted action.
Okay.
But this is a seeker. We do have a short EAF that is dated... Give him a second, he's locating it.
I already referred to GML 239, an actual book data statement, an EAF to, Rachel was supposed to get back to me. She was tabling it because it might not have to go through the board.
Okay, what is the date of the EAF?
On the 6th, May 6th.
May 6th. So I would acknowledge, for purposes of seeker, that this is a change of use, but that there are no structural changes to the building or to the exterior.
As such, we can make a negative declaration.
Right, so your resolution... Right, so your resolution would be that the board would serve in the capacity as lead agency for an unlisted action on an uncoordinated review. And based upon a short environmental assessment form dated May 6th, 2025, a negative declaration is rendered.
I'm moving that.
Let's just move that.
We move a lady.
Motion has been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have declared lead agency and rendered a negative declaration on the EAF. So next meeting, we can do a public hearing. We can get county comments, and we can keep you moving along. Thank you. All right, I did accidentally go a little out of order more than I wanted to, but our next applicant is Marion Garden Homes. Don't think the address of Ambrian Road is correct. I think we are talking about the Marion Garden Townhomes. Don't know the address necessarily, but this is the?
One Marion Gardens Terrace.
One Marion Garden Terrace.
That is the one.
I don't know if that tax map number is correct, but we will get to that.
Tax map number is correct.
Is it? Okay, so. So this is tax map parcel 31 dot 8 dash 01 dash 17 point 0. This is for subdivision and also a referral to the town board for a PUD amendment. We are going to ratify and reaffirm lead agency. Nadine, is that correct?
Correct.
Do I just use the standard language?
If you are ratifying and reaffirming, do you know when we rendered that initial declaration?
Say that again.
Do you remember when that would have been done?
So the board does ratify and reaffirm lead agency status on this?
And his prior, and his prior negative declaration. It was previously a type of action.
On this type 1 action, and we reaffirmed the negative declaration. So why don't you, for the benefit of everybody here, just briefly describe what it is you're trying to do? We've seen it several times, but go through it one more time?
Sure, absolutely. Good evening. Thank you for having us. So we are looking at Marion Gardens Townhomes. This is a single parcel right now. And what we are looking to do is subdivide this parcel from 1 into 2. The top lot here is 91A, I didn't refer to it wrong on the plan, and it contains all of the existing currently built townhomes. And then the second parcel, 91B, is currently vacant, but the area where we intend to complete up the rest of the construction. So the request is to subdivide this parcel into 2. And then as part of the recommendation with the town board and the amendment, we also have a modification to the setbacks where the lot line crosses between these two buildings.
That will be dealt with in the PUD action.
That's correct.
Okay, again, we have seen this three or four meetings in a row. And it feels like we're at a point where we'll probably move this along. I do have something new in my folder about cross easements, Nadine. Do we have to do anything with that?
I'm just pulling my, when you ask, do we have to do anything with that?
It was part of the packet that was handed to me before the meeting, so I don't know if this could be put into the public record or if it's just?
This was something that was being required because of the unusual configuration of the subdivision. And we, the board has previously asked for this. I don't believe I've seen the cross easement. Mark, where's Mario?
He's here.
Yeah, I know, I just think.
Do you have multiple options to turn it out on economic?
No, I was just going to say, if the board has any questions whether or not it's legally sufficient, if you just want to condition it upon review and approval of the town attorney, that's fine. But I'm not concerned because cross easements are fairly standard language.
Right, so?
The important thing is that we know we have one.
Yes, so we will condition it on that. We also made a note, looked in the meeting minutes last time, that we will condition to recombine the parcels after the issuance of the last C of O for the townhouses on, is 91A smaller?
91A is on the top and 91B is on the bottom.
Is that a condition that you're going to have any comment on?
It's our intention to do that. I don't, you know, there are multiple factors, but I'm not sure if that can be a condition regarding the subdivision. I mean, the intent is to do that.
We talked about this.
We talked about this, and I think what was the interest is there was discussion about phasing and what's your schedule for completion, your anticipated schedule for completions. So while it may not be necessary to make the condition that they combine the properties again, or recombine them, there is a schedule for completion, and we routinely have as part of conditions of approval timelines. So, correct me, but I believe last time, did you say 18 months to 2 years? Was that right?
You know, right now, the best guess as far as completion for the rest of the townhome units is 2, 2 and 1/2 years. It depends on a lot of factors, of course.
So what are you recommending?
You have the cross easement. So if the concern is that there be the, but the way they've changed it, there is the frontage. And then on top of that, you have the addition of the cross easement to give extra. So I don't think it's necessary to have those conditions.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to the board before I do the first vote, which will be the approval of the subdivision. And you just heard us talking about the conditions of approval. Does anybody else have any conditions?
Will you do the public hearing?
I thought we did. Last, no, you're right. We have to do it this one day. It is, yeah. Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to open a public hearing for Marion Garden Townhomes, One Marion Garden Terrace, tax map ID 31 dot 8 dash 01 dash 17 point 0.
So move.
Motion has been made in second. All those in favor? Any opposed? We're opening the public hearing. Should have done that first. My apologies. This is the public's opportunity to talk about this proposed action, which is a subdivision of that existing parcel into 2. And then there is a second portion of it where this will be potentially referred to the town board for a PUD amendment to deal with those setback issues that this subdivision creates. Does anybody wish to speak for or against this action? I'm obligated to ask one more time if anybody wants to speak either for or against this action.
So you guys aren't here for me either?
Being no public comment, the chair makes a motion to close the public hearing for Marion Garden, Garden Townhomes, One Marion Garden Terrace, tax map ID 31 dot 8 dash 01 dash 17 dot 0.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. All those in favor? Any opposed? We're back in regular meeting. I am going to, one last time, open it up to board comments. Is there any conditions or any further comments for the applicant?
So Nadine, you haven't read this cross easements, have you? Because it gave me a new appreciation for you trying to read it. So as long as we condition it on the town attorney approval, I'm fine with it.
I would recommend that be a condition.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the subdivision for Marion Garden Townhomes, One Marion Garden Terrace, tax map ID 31 dash, 31 dot 8 dash 01 dash 17 dot 0. I have a map in front of me that is titled Final Plan Resubdivision of Lot 91, Marion Meadows, Phase 1. The map is dated November 11th, 2024. There are revisions of January 20, 2025, January 28, 2025, and February 14, 2025. The map is stamped, is not signed. We will need to condition that on a signature.
Yes, sir.
End of motion.
Can you condition that on the town attorney?
Approval will be conditioned on approval of the cross easement document by the town attorney.
Wait, so, um. So, board members, I think we have a question over here. We don't see, town engineer and I, I don't, we don't see the easement area shown on this subdivision map. Normally, we have easements shown.
Do you mean the aqua easement?
No, the cross easement.
There should be something in the notes in the bottom left corner that reflects that the title will be filed along with the cross easement agreement. I believe this graph.
There's a note, our subject cross easement. But this is referencing the cross easement that we filed. But then, and just very quickly looking at what you're, what you prepared for a cross easement, you're referencing an easement as shown on the subdivision plan. And it's not shown.
It's the event, Nadine, is to have it signed first and have it recorded, and then record the subdivision map. That's why we like to record it.
I appreciate that, but then I think the subdivision plan should still show the easement, right? You should have a meets and bounds and know where your easement is going to fall. And normally, our subdivision plans show the easement.
Well, it covers all of the streets, you know, and all of the improvements. There's the sewers and the water. You know, I don't know how you would show all of that on the map.
No, 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 no. I think you're missing my, my point, Mario. Your subdivision map that you have prepared and provided does show some of the easements. It shows a sanitary sewer easement already. It shows the Anadaga County Water Authority easement. And it shows, well, there's multiple sanitary easements, and there's multiple aqua easements. Those are shown. My point is the cross easement is not shown. That's the only easement, to my knowledge, that's not on this map. And it shouldn't be on the map because it's an easement that they're requiring. I know you've got a note here referencing that it's going to be recorded, but then you've also got an easement that you're recording that references that it's shown on this map, and it's not shown on the map. And if you make a change to this map, then they've got to approve that change. So I just think, I'm not suggesting that you can't get approval tonight, but I think it needs to be?
It's another condition.
It's a condition that you need to submit an updated map reflecting that cross easement that's been proposed.
We'll do it.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we're good.
It's already hot in here.
We?
Can you work the 98 days?
You know.
We're going to, we're going to start from the beginning of that, okay? Chair, Chair so entertain a motion to approve the subdivision for Marion Garden Townhomes, One Marion Garden Terrace, tax map ID 31 dot 8 dash 01 dash 17 dot 0. As shown on the stamped but not yet signed drawing, which is titled Final Plot Resubdivision, Final Plan Resubdivision of Lot 91, Marion Meadows. That map is dated November 11th, 2024. Has revisions of January 20, 2025, January 28, 2025, February 14, 2025. Subdivide the subject parcel into 91A and 91B. 91A being 3.93 acres, 91B being 2.96 acres. To that, we are going to add two conditions. Condition 1 will be the approval of the cross easement agreements, cross access maintenance and reciprocal easement agreements by the town attorney. We're also conditioning it on the map being updated to reflect the proper language for the cross easements.
Well, it needs to show the easement. It doesn't show the easement at all.
Updated map showing the cross easements. And also that the map be stamped once it's finalized.
Do you want? Do you want?
Stamped and signed.
And do you want that, the review of that easement, of that updated plan, subject to the review of the town engineer?
Yes, just so. Final, final review of that map by the town engineer. Put it squarely on Jason.
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries for the subdivision. Now, we have a second part to this where we need to refer to the town board for amended PUD. We do have an application for that, right? You have submitted an application for that? All right, so the Chair will entertain a motion to refer to the town board an amended PUD application submitted by the applicant, Marion Garden Homes, located at One Marion Garden Terrace, tax map ID 31 dot 8 dash 01 dash 17 dot 0. End of motion. Motion has been made in second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Do we need a roll call vote on that, or is voice vote fine? Motion carries. So we'll see you again after you leave with town board. All right, last but certainly not least on the agenda this evening. We have Eldon Homes. Mr. Dan Bardaba listed here as Downer Street Road and Coman Road. We're talking about subject parcel that is tax map ID 036 dot dash 03 dash 21 dot 0, which at this point is a single parcel. Mr. Bardaba is seeking, we need to talk about procedure here, but in essence, seeking multiple variances on the property. And we do have some house key thing to do tonight, but I'm going to go let Mr. Bardaba make a presentation to the public here. And then, you know what? I'm going to call the public hearing first. Call the public hearing first? Yeah. So Chair will entertain a motion to call a public hearing for Eldon Homes, Downer Street Road and Coman Road, tax map ID 036 dot dash 03 dash 21 dot 0. Mr. Bardaba, would you please tell the public what it is you're trying to do?
Did we get a motion approved?
Second.
Motion has been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in public hearing.
Thank you very much. My name is Dan Bardaba with Eldon Homes, owner and president of the company, and the applicant today for an area variance for this parcel. Appreciate your patience, I know it's kind of a slow working. Just a really quick history, maybe some of the people that are here tonight or here for some of the prior meetings. This, this process began last fall when we submitted an application for a zone change on multiple parcels of property that we own. There's 12 acres, that's the subject of tonight's application. There's another 25 or 26 acres or so on the west side of Coman Road. And our original application was for a zone change for all the parcels, which in conversation with your board? With some conversation with your board, we were encouraged to pursue a R15 zone change as opposed to a PUD. That's what the application was, on this parcel and perhaps a PUD on the other parcel. So the other parcel was put on hold. So all we've been really meeting on the last few appearances has just been this 12 acre parcel. Through multiple appearances before this board, seeking a recommendation for a zone change, a recommendation was given to the town board, we unanimous vote, seven to one. And at the time, we were also, in addition to seeking a zone change, we were asking for the use of clustering. So we had some flexibility in the layout and the design of the lots. And I'll put that map up for you to see. So this, I'm going to show several maps tonight that are going to show lot yields. And the lot yields are pre-engineering. So it's still conceptual at this point, but it's a, it's a public road with two ways in and out and 25 lots. We tried to figure out what the max configuration would be, but through design, our experience is that we typically lose a lot, two lots, and that remains to be seen until we get to that stage. So this is 25 single de-cash, single-family homes. And I explained to the board, both boards, that by preference, our company prefers to build single-family de-cash homes. Though we do have experience building other properties and it was our goal to pursue this. The matter went to the town board, the application was denied after a public hearing. We applied then for R20, and at that time, it was an effort to compromise. The R20 layout would have yielded 20 to 22 lots. That application was denied without referral. And so then we decided perhaps we could pursue a variance. And I'll show you that layout. So again, the layout is similar. It is a compromise again, there would be 22 lots. These lots have an average size of 17,000, or I'm sorry, a minimum size of 17,000 square feet. They would be still quite wide, instead of 200 feet wide, which would be required with the R40 zoning, they would be 110 feet wide. They'd only be 150 feet deep as opposed to 200 feet deep. And at 17,000 feet, they would be bigger in size than all the lots that they back up to on the north side on Landier. So there would be 22, and like I mentioned before, plus zero, minus perhaps one, two, once we get through the, uh, the design stage, if it goes to that point. So I would be remiss and perhaps some, um, shed some light on our alternatives because there's certainly a possibility that a zone change is never granted. There's a possibility that variance is granted, in which case we would go back and figure out or apply for a subdivision of the land within R40 use. And I think it's been clear to this board, and perhaps some of the residents appreciate this, that the R40 does allow single-family de-cash homes to be built. So we have a concept plan of what that could look like. That would look something like this. So it's 12 lots, the math is very difficult, 12 acres. Slightly less than an acre per lot, 40,000 square feet is the zoning requirement, acres, 43,560. So all the lots would be a minimum size of 40,000 square feet. We would create multiple possible access points to the property as we go through the approvals. So we're showing some, perhaps some private driveways and a private road system. And this is just one version of a plan that could be generated. And that's showing 12 duplexes, 24 residences. So, single-family de-cash within R15 zone could have yielded 25 residences. Single-family de-cash within our 20 zone would have yielded 20 to 22 residences. The variance request, if granted, would yield 22 residences. This would yield anywhere from 20 to 24, depending on what the final configuration is. So same number of residences, fewer home sites, uh, I'm sorry, fewer building lots, the same number of home sites because you essentially have 24 home sites. Presents some challenges as far as homeownership is concerned. We would be required to form a homeowners association so that we can convey legal interest in each of the residences to the owners without illegally subdividing the lots. And that can be done, New York State allows that to be done, it's handled through the state attorney general's office. So I really think tonight's decision comes down to would you rather see single-family de-cashed or would you rather see single-family attached? I believe the impact on the property is probably the same either way.
Dan, quick question for the audience, because I know they're interested in this based on the comments that I've read. In terms of area coverage, as far as square feet, based on your model with 22 lots, single-family, what do you anticipate the overall percentage of coverage would be of the land versus the 12 lots with 24 units?
So our homes are a combination of ranches and homes. The ranches range from range in size from 1,500 square feet to 2,300 square feet. The colonials have a smaller, the ranch covers the exact, the square footage of the house is the square footage of the coverage, at least for the home. You've got driveways, other improvements on the property. The colonials have a slightly smaller footprint, you can get the additional square footage on the seventh floor. So if we assume that perhaps every home might average 13 to 1400 square feet of footprint, you do that 22 times with single-family homes, you're going to get, you know, maybe 25 to 30,000 square feet of coverage. And we have 43,000 square feet per acre in 12 acres. These, the, the footprints of the duplexes tend to be a little bit bigger. But this, this design in, in a way reflects the final design of what we would build. So I would say the coverage is probably about the same. You probably made the case that the duplexes take up a little bit more coverage, but without, without sitting down and drawing it out and doing the math, I can't say it.
Alright, so I'm going to remind everybody that we are in public hearing. This isn't really time for the board to make comments. I know Mr. Virginia was just asking for a point of clarification there, which is fine. I do want to make a clarification before we start taking public comment. This property is not, it's currently zoned R40. It is true, Mr. Bardaba said that he asked for a zone change. I do want to point out that PUD was not considered by this board because the subject parcel isn't large enough based on our ordinances to go for a PUD. I think you have to be over 15 acres. I can't remember exactly, but acres was too small.
I could make a comment about that.
Go ahead.
My preference from day one was PUD. Because if a PUD is granted, we get a lot of flexibility in the lot shapes and sizes. We're, we're pretty ambivalent as far as what size lot we have. It could be as small as 5,000 square feet, as large as 43,000, 40,000 square feet, which is shown on the one acre lots. And with some flexibility on the shapes and sizes of the lots, we can create max buffer. We can keep all the houses in one area, we can minimize the amount of road, we can minimize the amount of disservice. We like that flexibility. There is a, uh, part of your PUD ordinance that's arbitrary. Arbitrarily, there's a restriction that you can't have a PUD on land that's less than 15 acres, although there's quite a bit of acreage just north of here that's PUD and they're just not contiguous. But they're close. And I'm not sure what it would take to get that relief, if it would be an amendment to your code or a variance on that one issue. And if that was an opportunity to compromise, go back to the drawing board, which we actually would like to do. It's one of the things we enjoy. We go back to the drawing board, we come up with another layout based on what an agreed upon lot size would be.
Understood, but you know, as a developer that does this quite a bit, you'd have to go back to the town board and have that, that law changed.
Unless it could be done by variance.
So the other.
Or, excuse me.
The other point that I wanted to make is that this is not zoned in such a way that apartments can be built. We, we received a lot of comments from the public about apartments. Whether the zone change for R15 is granted or not, and as it sits now with R40, neither allow for apartments. It's never really been on the table, that's not something Mr. Bardaba has been proposing, nor does the zoning allow it. So you've heard his presentation, you hopefully understand exactly what he's asking for. What we have before us is a request to apply variances to a subdivision in order to get lot sizes that he is seeking with this application. So at this time, I will take comments from the public. I'm going to ask.
I'd like to answer a question.
Who is speaking? Yes.
In your R40 setup with the duplexes? I didn't, I couldn't see because that's, that's a new drawing to me. My name is Tom Fugia, I'm in the codes office. I wanted to know how you could design a road for fire access?
Having even attempted yet, but it would be, it would meet all the obligations that are presented in the fire code. So there would be a certain minimum distance or maximum distance from every house to a fire.
But you would have to have some type of hammerhead or for fire access?
Yeah, it may not be clear from this drawing, but this could be a hammerhead, this could be a road, this could be a road access, this could be a road access. I'm showing several because I'm not sure what the process of applying for a road cut from the state will yield. And if we show them multiple access points, we can hopefully come up with something that is best suited for the problem.
So multiple access points on Route 31?
Yes, could be.
In between, in between Comain and Southgate.
Okay, we're, we're in public here, I'm going to, I'm going to shut this down for a second. This isn't even the proposal in front of us, so let's, let's take it one step at a time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on the proposal that is in front of us regarding variances? If you do, you have to go up to the mic, state your name and address, and make your comments. We are not going to put a clock on anybody, but there's a lot of people here. So I'm going to allow roughly three minutes or so. I'm not going to cut anybody off, but I ask that everybody be respectful of everybody else's time and try to make your comments concise.
And Jim, if we, if it starts getting repetitive, can we just, unless they have something new, you know, kind of limit it?
We, we will do our best. So does anybody want to start and feel free? Yeah, that'd be great.
Could you leave it there because I will wipe something out on the map? My name is Andy Stack, I live at One Landier Lane, so this really affects me, this is my house right here. When you're going to knock down all these trees to be able to build your house, is there going to be, are you going to knock them all down so this new person's going to be able to look into my backyard and I'm going to be able to look into their backyard? Or are you going to leave some trees off so there'll be some kind of blocking and we get a little privacy out of this?
Is it Mr. Block? Stock, sorry.
Yeah, Stack.
Stack. My apologies, so. So you're doing a public comment, generally you're addressing the board and not necessarily the applicant. If you want to answer that question, feel free.
So the answer is our preference would be yes, to, to give you some type of buffer. A lot transpires during the approval process from an engineering point of view. For the sake of stormwater management, if a swale needs to be built, you carry all the stormwater properly to a detention pond, then that may require the removal of some trees. Sometimes we engage with the town regarding buffers that may be later planted, fencing, things of that nature. So our preference is to provide buffers. Sometimes the design topographies will change and that requires sometimes the removal of trees. We haven't investigated that yet.
Am I allowed to ask another question or am I?
Again, yes, you are addressing the board. I'm going to allow a little bit of back and forth, but if it gets excessive.
This is my final question.
Sure.
When I lived here for 30 years, I had to put a French drain in to keep the water, it builds up in here from hitting my basement. This floods out every year. I mowed my grass twice, I can't mow back here because my lawn mower would get stuck if it'd be there at Christmas time. So my point is, what are you going to do to handle that problem? And first of all, are you even aware there is a problem?
The answer is, once these things come to light, we're happy to work our designs so that we can lead you through those type of things. Because it sounds to me like it not only would be a problem for you, it would probably be a problem for these folks.
It goes all the way down.
Sure, sure. So hence that sounds like a place where a swale wants everything to be coming down to the property low spot down here. So for the sake of removing some trees, it might help with the storm.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to make a comment?
Your friend.
Name and address, please, and speak into the microphone.
My name is Paul Fred, 23 Comain. And I'm kind of based on some of this on an article in the newspaper. And I said, here we are again, back to the same issue. Nice self written article in the paper, us NIMBYs, I just love when people start resorting to name calling, have already voiced their opinion in the board rule. Builder wants to get along with the neighborhood, I failed to see that happening at this point, his choice, not ours. Now we should feel threatened by a lawsuit. You have your zoning to build what was approved, is the builder going to take their bet and follow the home? I doubt it, it can happen or not. Builder mentioned in the article that they want to build affordable housing. Who needs $400,000 houses? Why can't some $150,000 houses be built, annual homes come to mind based on what Andy just said here with the water problem? The younger people that may be working in the area might like the price point and the houses will sell fast. I understand the economics of infrastructure. All the work that will lead you go into utilities, preparing the site before one house goes out is expensive. We're asking that you work within what was approved. We understand that you purchased the land with the intent of building and making money. That is the American way. These subdivisions may force some people to move. I know the houses will be sold and the world will move on. All we ask is that the builder prides themselves on being a vulnerable person, a vulnerable in their heart, be cognizant of those that live here, it's not about just you. I propose that the builder is now in charge of maintaining that side of the entrance to the neighborhood. Our young neighbor Declan has been taking care of this for over a year, cutting the grass. I think that should end today. That's what I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to make a comment? Go ahead. Name and address. Name and address, please.
Okay, Janet Resbeck, 24 Comain Road. And I'm going to read this because last time I talked, I got a little emotional, I got a little ridiculous. R40, R15 was denied, R20 was denied. And right now, we're back here for variances. My concern for that is, this is for the smaller acreage, what happens behind Comain? Not Comain, yeah, Comain, that part. Congestion, traffic, density are all issues. One close to my heart is drainage. Some know that our house flooded. There continues to be issues with that, with other properties as well. This town is going to great lengths to help gas drain, so to speak. But codes are different. The new development 20 years ago caused different drainage issues than we had recently or to begin with. And there's trouble between the drainage from old to new, some of the new people have drainage issues. What's going to happen with this next section if you decide to go ahead with the variances? Yes, there's been articles written, they've been quite interesting. We've been accused of being NIMBY. We've been accused of being NIMBY, not being open to new development for my front, not meeting the needs of first-time buyers. Dan's LLC purchased the land knowing it was R-40. He's expected to get, he expected to get his R-15 due to past experience with a different board. Even then, 20 years ago, over 100 people from our development came to that meeting and we weren't listened to. Please, listen to us now. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other takers? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Can we make a motion if you guys are standing up?
Yeah, really.
My name is Jim Lamont, 202 Comain Road West, also 146 Comain Road. I'm not going to repeat all the reasons that I was opposed from the last meeting, but I will say I'm opposed to any rezoning. I'm not opposed to development. I do believe in controlled development. There is a lot of property for sale in County Van Geren that can be developed to meet the needs to, you know, increase development, housing, or add key housing insurance issues. I don't think we need to change zoning, we just need to expand and to put around developed properties.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other takers? Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I'm a mom, I'm a grandma, and I'm a great-grandma.
Excuse me, could you give your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jill Johnson, 14th Comain Road. We're the Alguo people, all generations. My kids love that neighborhood. It's hardly Comain. Affordable housing is what we need. We don't need density. Two of my kids can't afford homes. Never mind the fact they've worked three jobs, put themselves through school, at student homes, very depressed situation. Because of this, one's just set for, at 37-years-old, a massive hurricane attack. We need affordable housing. We don't need increased density. We don't need increased traffic. We need yards, we need yards that are safe for children to play. These lots are too small for children to play in safe. Exiting traffic out onto State Route 31 with that many entrances would be utterly ridiculous. You cannot get out of Comain Road now, you can't get out of Southgate now. That's another big complaint from my one son who goes to work every day. Most frustrating part of this day is getting off the road to get to work. I agree with what Janet said. We've already made our concerns known. 40,000 square feet, you have enough to work with. Larger homes, larger lots, fewer homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to make any comments? Just a reminder, name and address first, please.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chesgrove, 22th Comain Road West. Developer and planning board, we want our neighborhood left alone. Leave the R-40 zoning without any area variances. The same goes for Comain Road West, where I am. Clearly, this builder doesn't respect our neighborhood. We were all here last time, and we will keep coming back to fight for our neighborhood. There are other places to build with land. Find it and build there. I am against this.
Thank you. We have a lot of people here today. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Yes, sir?
My name is Tim Morgan, resident of Landred Lane for 40-plus years. Just a couple of things. We've had this conversation already, and I told you before, I'll say it again, nobody's, we shouldn't be against change. Change happens. Dan's going to build out there, all right? So why don't we get the best we can, the best deal we can get for housing? We want single-family houses if we can get them. And the problem's going to be two things. I'm going to repeat a couple of things. The traffic is already going to be rough, and I don't know how you're going to deal with that. And the water issues on Landred Lane are bad. You drive down, and you can see even the places where they put two or three of those new homes on 31, the water's running on Landred Lane from the streams from there that are coming back out. There are probably three or four underground streams in there. I know the Army Corps of Engineers did a study on this, and they missed 65% of water blends. That's a fact, right? Engineers have told me this. Probably before anything gets done, Dan, you probably need to do a DEC review of it if you haven't, just to make sure you're not getting, your last hit of geyser in there, okay? There's standing water in there now. I said, the frogs are singing, but there's a lot of water, there's three or four underground streams in there that I know of. I've walked that land for 40 years. It's, used to be apple orchards, right? 40 acres of apple orchards, and they had streams all through that. I don't know, I don't know how you can make sure that Landred Lane does not get flooded when you build out back there, because I don't know where you're going to divert the water. Because the pipes that are in place now cannot hold any more water. We had rainfall last year, the first time in my life in our basement or in our basement, because the pipes cannot hold water. And put more houses in, it's just, I mean, it's just logical that you're going to have more water going into the pipes. I don't know where it's going to go. But I don't want it to go in my house, I guess is what I can say. Thank you.
All right, do we have anybody else that would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Grace White, and I, forgot my address, Comain Road West. I think, I appreciate what everyone said, and I am agreeing with it. I don't want to repeat. However, I think the thing that concerns me, folks, and I believe Mr. Barnabas doesn't have these answers because of ambiguity. Someone talked about, Mr. Stack talked about his area that he had to put the French drain in, and Mr. Barnabas had said, I didn't know about that. So, the thing that I think about is, what else does Mr. Barnabas know? And how will he get that information? And how will he extrapolate that to do what is right to build appropriately to meet our concerns about the flooding? So, I think that is something that I would ask this board and Mr. Barnabas to take into consideration. I understand that it's probably different from the variance. I think I just wanted to point that out, that there's just so much ambiguity, and I do understand that while you're creating this, you don't know. But I don't understand, I don't know how we can help him make sure he understands that.
Would anybody else like to speak?
I have to clarify something, please, to the residents.
Sure, if you keep it brief, I'd appreciate it.
Could you come to the mic so the recorder can hear? Thanks.
Sure. Now, I've been doing this a long time, and everybody desires affordable housing. It's sort of a term of art. It assumes a certain person at a certain price point can afford a house. I'd love to sell homes at the lowest price point as possible. I would sell more homes. It's becoming possible with the materials that we have to pay for, the land that we have to develop, and the labor we have to pay for, to build anything under $400,000. If you know a builder that's currently doing that, then they have a secret formula that I don't have. But we don't pretend to build affordable homes. We build luxury homes. We build homes that are out of reach for many buyers. But when they're not built, the people that are living in $200,000 homes, $250,000 homes, they don't have a home to buy. So you're creating a pipeline. It's actually a pyramid, and you're clogging the top. Nothing's happening at the top. So what's happening is everything in the middle and the bottom is going up. Any of you that have relatives, friends, family members that have tried to buy a home in the last four or five years, see the effect of the lack of that growth? They're paying tens of thousands of dollars more than asking price for a home, probably more than they should pay, for the opportunity to then invest another $50,000, $100,000 renovating that home. So because of the clog, we're creating a problem at the price points below that. So I can't say that I aspire to build affordable homes. I can't. What I can say is, the more homes that are built in Onondah County, the more new ones, the more relief that'll put on the resale market at the price points below our homes. So I don't want to come off as, you think there's a big switch. I never represented that I could build affordable homes.
Right, we are still in public hearing? I'd like to ask if anybody else wishes to make any comments at the public hearing. Now's your opportunity. Ah, we have, someone coming up from the back, sir.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
No, go ahead, you go.
Oh, go ahead.
All right, he's going.
Mike Meyer, 144 Comain Road. I'd just like to do an analogy. So, most of us have children, have children. A lot of the kids are spoiled. So, Bobby wants an ice cream after dinner on Thursday. He says, not allowed. He asks mom, mom says, no. He goes to ask dad. Dad says, you know, ice cream's not allowed on Thursdays. He gets frustrated, he swats him. Well, kids being spoiled like we are now. He goes to the police, says, dad, hit me, I want him arrested. And that sounds a little bit like what's going on here, you know, with the lawsuits and stuff. He knew it was 48 or 40,000 square feet, he now wants to change it.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Nancy Onett, 22th Comain Road West. I just wanted to say that I was here for the other hearings as well, and it just seems like we're so unmarred around this. I did today take a picture of Comain when I was going to take a left up on to go on Downer Street, and that's the blindness almost of the Russian roulette that you have to play to come out of the road. Opposed to the higher density, I think that with the builder, he knew what he was buying. It was for the R-40, and that would be like me purchasing a home and knowing that it's not zoned for swimming pool. And then all of a sudden, I purchase my home, I close on it, and now all of a sudden, I come to the board and I want a swimming pool. I want it changed. And he knew what he bought. The thing that's really bothersome is that, and I know he can't submit everything right now because it would be too costly, but it's just, he wants these variances, he wants different things, but we don't really have the plans. Like, everything is just up in the air. And we don't, but we definitely know that it will have negative infrastructures for the flooding problems that we already have right now. And it's like, and Jerry Maguire, when they say, show me the money, well, we're saying, show us the plan, show us what your ideas are. Exactly. Because to say that, when they talk about the handrail or whatever, and to say that there would be a lot of exits out between Southgate and Comain, well, that's not even possible. I mean, that would be crazy. So I'm just here to say that I definitely oppose it for the variances, and if he's going to end up building, he ends up building, but it should stay in the whole vicinity.
Okay. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to speak? Go ahead, sir.
Jim Walker, 202 Comain Road West. I'm not a builder, I'm a builder, I'm a builder, it's the type of thing. Either I'm wrong, or he pays those, we've got group by shoes, it works out. 10 years, it'd be, it'd be, if you want to build single homes, I want you to, to afford The type of homes.
Would you like to speak?
Jason, while he's coming up, are either the lots that he owns in the Upland Harbor Heights drainage district?
This one is, we included that one from the district back in 2008, doesn't matter. I'm not sure about the other one.
September 21, Comain Road. I said it was changing, this might not be a place, but for the other lot, what took the time for it to lose for that? And what do you think of the last reporting? And what's coming up for that?
To the best of my knowledge, the applicant has not submitted anything for that particular parcel. So I couldn't speak to it.
There's still a matter in front of the planning board pending a vote on a referral. So the matter was adjourned. We bifurcated the application at the planning board stage, so we advanced the referral process on the 12-acre. We didn't vote or come to a decision where your board didn't on the other piece. As far as I, as far as I know, as far as I'm concerned, it's still a claim. May be withdrawn, having a different type of application, maybe...
I just couldn't remember if there was an original application for it. You're saying that there was?
So, yeah, a zone change application was applied for both pieces. They were both referred to the planning board. One went back up to the town board, and one did not.
Okay. So, it hasn't moved anywhere, and I don't know that there's any timeframe on that. I think the applicant's concentrating on this parcel right now. We have a few more. Go ahead, make your way up to the front.
I'm from Parish, 202 Comain Road West, and I just want to say I'm opposed very strongly, just like everyone else mentioned, the concerns of drainage, safety, traffic. Actually, one of my concerns about safety are is that all these plans show an exit onto Comain Road. And as you pull into Comain Road, like I was doing just a few days ago, thinking, imagining ours, and I guess he's going to put a stop sign there, and so they get, they look and they see, oh, think, you can pull in there, and there's just not time to correct yourself. It's probably 20 hours, so car pulling out and a car pulling into the neighborhood, so that really needs to be reviewed. So that's a safety issue. But my most important thoughts tonight are the lack of trust in this developer, his lack of investment and commitment to our community. He obviously has shown that with a lawsuit. I can't imagine that this is the direction that our community, the County Van Geren that I love so much, is going in, trying to work with someone who has tried to deviate from every zoning variance, lost, trying to use lawsuits. That's not someone I trust to grow our community. I'm not familiar with the process of town board. I am familiar with the process of business and companies. I work for, in corporations. Our board looks at the company and develops strategies. We look at visions, and we represent our shareholders. I feel like our neighborhood here is your shareholders. The people that you represent, I want to thank you for the last denial of the option change. But these are your shareholders, and I want you to grow them here with a vision. I'm not against growth at all, but have a strategy and have a vision. That's all we ask.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
My name is Dean Taylor. I live at 19th Comain Road. There's only a simple fact that I want to point out. There is water that is above his property. There's water in his property, and there's water below his property. It's all coming downhill. An awful lot of that is coming through my yard. Now, you're deciding whether he can do this or not. Where are the engineers that are going to take care of the problem of the water that's there? Are you supposed to take care of this, or is another group going to take care of it? I spend an awful lot of money trying to take care of this water. And I just can't do it. Thank you.
I do want to point out at this time, the board generally isn't going to respond to comments. This is your opportunity to speak. When we go back into regular session, you will hear us speak to some of these issues, okay? Anybody else like to speak? All right, I'm going to ask one more time. Is there anybody else that would like to make a public comment? Sure, go ahead, sir.
Tom, I'm from 24th Comain Road. A question you perhaps could answer when you go back into session. Some of us, myself included, sent emails to the chairman. I wish he was here tonight. I understand you couldn't be. Were those emails all shared with you? Okay, we are going to leave the public hearing open. Means we are going to, Chair will entertain a motion to go back into general meeting. So, I think that's it. Chair will entertain a motion to go back into our general meeting for the Planning and Zoning Board.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are back in our general meeting session. We sincerely thank everybody for coming out and providing your comments. Your comments are appreciated. We love it when we have this level of participation from the public. It is important to hear what you guys think, and we will take all those comments into consideration as we move forward. So, thank you. All right. So, we have a little bit of housekeeping that we want to talk to you about. Did Codes talk to you about an application for the subdivision?
Do you first want to acknowledge the emails?
Should have done it in public hearing, sorry.
It doesn't matter if you do that during the public hearing.
You just said something. All right. So, we are not going to read all the emails into public record. They are public record. You are free to request those from the Codes office. I am going to make a couple of general comments. I have 16 emails here. There may have been more that have come in in the last few hours. They were all opposed to the proposed action. Some of those were from people that also made comments tonight, I should say, in fairness to the applicant. I'm not going to read them word for word, but at the suggestion of counsel, I will read the names of those people that did submit emails, okay? So, I have Paul Schmidt, 23 Comain Road. Margaret and James Brackley, 236 Comain Road West. Michael and Robin Duct, I'm sorry, I don't see an address on that one. Thomas Resbeck, 24 Comain Road. Barbara Almond Dunn and Mike Dunn, 3 Comain Road. Edmund George, 17 Buccaneer Bend. Dave Agbitson, hope I said that right. I do not see an address on this one. John and Patricia Barone, 154 Comain Road West. Lori McCarthy, don't see an address right off the bat. John and Heather Mahal, 126 Comain Road. Jill Harris, 208 Comain Road West. Barbara Laja, 15 Buccaneer Bend, probably said that wrong, apologies. Vincent DeFervio, 108 Comain Road. Nicole Dowson Dodd, 28 Comain Road. Michael and Christine Long, 16 Buccaneer Bend. And Shirley Ledoux, Comain Road West, no house number given. Again, those are available for anybody that wants to look those over. I think you can get those from the Codes office. They have copies. All right. So, we've left the public hearing open. I do want to ask Mr. Barnabat, has Codes reached out to you regarding a application for the subdivision?
I was forwarded an email that involves correspondence from the county attorney. And I am not aware fully of the process, so I'm a little bit hesitant. Chicken and egg, variance, subdivision, subdivision variance. So, I've done this in other towns, I've seen it done each way. It wasn't brought to my attention until very recently.
Understood.
Perhaps could have been cured then, and I didn't see any reference to it in the ordinance, so.
No, our zoning law wouldn't outline that type of procedure any more than it tells you that you need to have a variance before you can have a use, you know, that's not typically how that would be done. But normally, in all the municipalities that we represent, if you are going to ask for variance relief for a lot, there needs to be either an existing lot that you're going to vary, or a proposed lot. So, in this case, that's the thought with the subdivision plan, and I do fully appreciate, and then the board, I believe, is aware, that this was just brought to your attention, and that wasn't intentional. But given the fact that you're asking for variance relief, there should be a subdivision application that goes with it so that you can link together what it is that is with the lots that are, the relief is being requested. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I feel like the name is such a misnomer. When I read area variance, I think of the terms of a variance for the entire parcel, not a variance on a lot, but I certainly understand what you're saying.
But even with what you're saying, without a subdivision application, we don't even know what that would look like. And I think that's what some of the board, or, excuse me, some of the members of the public tonight were kind of touching on with the ambiguity and not knowing. So, a subdivision application would at least link the two together.
Could I draw, because your subdivision application process starts typically with a sketch plan or concept plan, and you might go to a preliminary plan, and that eventually gets approved. So, I'm not sure if I would draw a plan with an application showing the lots post-variance, assuming that you're going to get it, or pre-variance, or I'm just showing 12, but I'm asking for more. I'm a little confused about the process.
I appreciate that. I don't know if you have an attorney?
I do.
Okay. So, I generally am reluctant to give people legal advice.
We can contact you if I notice.
I think that would probably be a better thing.
If I hear you correctly, you somebody's featured in the public hearing still.
Correct. I would prefer if your attorney reached out and we spoke about how perhaps you can take that, or cure that. But normally, what you would do, like I said, in all the municipalities we represent, what people typically do is if, let me use a whole different example, okay? And this is kind of for everybody in the room, too. It wouldn't be uncommon for someone to come in into a planning board, you pick the board out of the municipality, and say, I have 10 acres and I want to divide it into three lots, lots 1, 2, and 3. Lots 1 and 2 comply with our zoning. Lot 3 means 125 foot of road frontage, but I only have 100. I need an area variance for lot 3. The board knows that, right? There's something there. So, that's what I'm, it's the same idea here for what you want. So, the subdivision process, as you pointed out, there's sketch plan, preliminary plan, final plan. That's not unique to the town of Van Buren. That is state law. That's under 276, I believe, town law. So, that process is what it is. But typically also, as you know, you've been through the subdivision plan and process very much, yeah, quite often. The preliminary and final, they, once you have preliminary, often the final comes right on the heels. So, yes, it would be subject to that process. I wouldn't want to give any indication that the process somehow would be different for a subdivision. But any relief that you would be looking for to create that would need to be linked with this area variance. Makes sense?
Yes. We also do need to refer this to county and subdivision, and the variance requests need to be submitted together. We did check with county on that. So, you have a subdivision plan, but we see, I think we need an application to go along with it to keep things moving forward.
That's understood.
All right. So, we are going to have some discussion on this tonight. I do want to explain something. The applicant's done a good job explaining the history, the fact that it was requested for an R15 zone change. Town board denied that request. So, the applicant is in front of us requesting what essentially is a subdivision, and he's asking for variance relief on those lots. So, us as a board, our requirement here is that we need to evaluate those variances based on the current zoning. We can't go back in time and say, this maybe, you know, we did vote for an R15, that's off the table. This isn't our 40 lot. He's asking to subdivide it, and he's asking for several variances per lot. When we are evaluating a variance, there are standards and rules that are mandated by the state. It's not something that we make up. So, with an area variance, it's a balancing test. There's five criteria that we need to consider when we consider the variances. That doesn't mean if we determine three of those things, the applicant is not meeting that it's an automatic denial. It's not a scoring system. It's a balancing test. We have discretion as a board to weigh each one of those criteria and determine what we think is in the best benefit for the residents in the neighborhood, okay? And we do have to balance that with the request and amount of benefit that the applicant would be getting if he were to, if they were to get those variances. So, balancing test. The board shall balance benefit to applicant with determinant to health, safety, and welfare of the community. The five criteria that we need to consider for each variance is as follows. One, whether benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. Item two, undesirable change in neighborhood character or to nearby properties. Item number three, whether the request is substantial. Item four, whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects. And item five, whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, okay? Now, we have 22 lots that are asked to be being created. The way they're being created are non-conforming lots. And the applicant is asking for multiple variances per lot. Variance for each lot for size, frontage, depth, front yard setback, side yard setback, don't think rear yard setback, but I'm not sure. I don't know. No. So, in general, five variances for each lot. For the purposes of the discussion that the board is going to have, it's much easier conceptually for us to think of this as a whole, not looking at each individual lot. When it comes to a point, when we vote on this, it's a procedural issue that we'll talk to the town attorney about, whether we need to vote on each variance individually. For the purposes of this discussion that we're going to have, we can look at it as a whole. Or the variance, is the lot size variance appropriate for the whole subdivision, okay? With that long preamble, I am going to open it up to the board for initial comments. Would anybody like to speak?
So, we could be looking at 110 variances.
That is correct.
Or maybe more. Pretty unconventional way to do it. It's not the typical thing we usually see, obviously. And as it stands today, he could build the duplexes. So, even if the variance was turned down, rejected, there's really no harm, no foul to him because he can still build. It may not what he truly wants, desires to build, but he could still build.
Jason?
Yeah, I think, you know, the interesting thing is, it's 22 single-family homes for 12 duplexes equaling 24 units. You know, you look at that parcel, and, you know, I've drove around there, I've looked at the flooding. Dan's been in this many times. Personally, I think he builds a good product, the home itself. Now, obviously, we can contest whether or not the drainage has been sufficient. Doesn't sound like it has in certain areas. But when I look at the character of that neighborhood, and a couple of gentlemen, I wrote them down here, let me see here. Jim Walker doesn't like the duplexes. I don't know, I was hoping to hear more from the audience as far as the duplexes versus the single-family homes, because by right, Mr. Barnabat can build there, and he's going to build there. So, the question is, what product do we want as a board for him to put on that property that's going to be the best for this town and its residents who abut the property? That's how I'm looking at this. And the way I look at it is, I don't like duplexes. I think they attract a different type of occupant than a single-family homeowner. I think the, there isn't as much buy-in from a duplex. Now, I don't know if the plans are to sell those or to rent those. Obviously, I don't know what the covenants are going to be in the homeowners association as to whether or not he can allow renting versus buying. That plays a big deal into it, too. But I think the better product, because again, by right, he can build here in our 40 district is 22 single-family homes.
Could you say that again? You said at R40, it can be two.
No, I said at R40, he can build. He's either going to build 12 townhomes at 24 units.
Well, hold on there. That's only if the variance is old water and approved, right?
He will not need a variance for the townhomes.
But he'll need a home for our new roadway coming off 31. It's not, right? It's not as simple.
The county isn't going to give multiple road cuts on Route 31.
But how can he do duplexes without those road cuts?
Well, he can probably get one road cut at the flashing light, I would think.
Let me, I just want to back up to this statement, because maybe I misunderstood something. That view right now that's being displayed can be built without any variance.
That is correct.
No variance at all.
That's correct. Those are 1-acre lots. Those are 1-acre lots.
So, it is either 22.
Yes, it's 22, or 2. He's going to build. And the question is, what product do you want as a community, as me, as a board member who's trying to represent the community and driving around that community? If I'm living in that community, I want single-family homes.
All right. Hold on, hold on.
That's what we've decided since day one, without a bigger lot.
Listen, listen, listen. I don't want to come down heavy here, but when there's board discussion, it isn't open for the public. Trying to be respectful of your attendance here. We have a former chairman in the house, Mr. Geis, he's roaming over back there. He would never allow us to hear this. I will, if you raise your hand and keep your comments brief, we will hear your comments, okay? Go ahead.
I think throwing up those duplexes, that's the first time anybody's seen that today. So, nobody was prepared to make comments regarding that. Nobody knew that that was even an option.
Right. So, there's a point of order here, too. The public hearing is still open, okay? We have not opposed it.
Not tonight.
I know, but it's open for next month.
Information that's been received at the next, when the public hearings continue at the next meeting, there's still an opportunity for people to speak within the public hearing, which is when it's appropriated.
Now, I believe Dan did put that drawing up in his presentation tonight.
Yes, and that's why the public's not, yes.
Yes, agreed. Agreed.
And that is not the proposal that we're speaking of tonight. Tonight, we're speaking of the proposal for 22 lots that would be non-conforming lots for R40 with variances that would essentially make them conforming lots.
Jennifer Mayne?
Yes, Mr. Seig.
The one reason we submitted to the town board to take the R15 originally that they denied was because we didn't want to see these duplexes. Is that right?
All right. I'm going to close the comments for a minute because we still have some more discussion to be made. And as the town attorney rightly pointed out, we do have more comment period at our next meeting, for those of you who want to make additional comments. Were you done with your comments?
Yeah, I think I've said enough, thanks.
Let me just clarify something.
You can.
Sure. It's probably hard to see all this. I've tried to, we're not suggesting that there's going to be multiple cuts. We're showing multiple because we don't know where they may be required.
Yeah, you're going to get wind around the sidelines and stuff like that.
And what we probably can't see is there's one private drive that goes through the entire parcel. So, certainly, it would be challenging to build this because a lot of times, once we know which direction we're going to go-
And as the town attorney rightly pointed out, we do have more comment period at our next meeting for those of you who want to make additional comments. Were you done with your comments?
Yeah, I think I've said enough. Thanks.
Can I just clarify something?
You can.
Sure. It's probably hard to see all this. I'm trying to piece it up. We're not suggesting that there's going to be multiple cuts. We're showing multiple because we don't know where they may be required.
Right.
Yeah, you're going to get wind around the sidelines and stuff like that. And what we probably can't see is there's one private driver that goes through the entire parcel. So certainly, it would be challenging to build this because a lot of times, once we know which direction we're going to go, and we're going to get some clarity very soon from the boards, then we quickly go to work and figure out how we're going to make it happen. So it was, make it very clear, this, this is not my preferred layout. We're in the build, we're in the process of building homes. I'd rather build 24 as opposed to 12. I'd rather build 24 as opposed to 20. You know, I'm like a baker. I have eggs, I make something with the eggs. The more eggs I have, the more stuff I can make. These are the eggs. I'm going to have 24, perhaps, plus zero, minus two or four. We don't know yet. But something's going to happen here. This also presents challenges that, it's going to be hard for me to explain this without it sounding threatening, because that's not my intent. I'm not trying to threaten anybody to get what I want. We go through a process, we respect the process, we respect the board members. Everybody's treated us with a lot of profession, professionalism, I appreciate it. Conveying ownership of each of these units requires me to create a homeowners, homeowners association, a very unique homeowners association. The type of homeowners association that is already in your town. It's in Village Green. It requires me to create a condominium homeowners association. Apply to the state. It's a very lengthy, expensive application process, but it's the only way I can convey ownership of one side to one person, ownership to the other side to the other person. We create a condominium.
On a single lot.
Yes. And what makes them interesting, and we're a little bit schizophrenic as far as which way we would go, is that the buyers of those homes receive a considerable discount on their assessment. So they will pay 38 to 40% less on their property taxes because of the condominium status of the community. So not only are you inviting duplexes, you're inviting them to pay considerably less in property taxes than a single-family homes would pay.
The only thing is, you're showing a private road. That'd be the only advantage for the town. They wouldn't have to maintain the road.
That's true.
Correct.
That's true, but there's a lot of other common elements to the property we could create, but it qualifies, but it's an arduous process, and it's not the way I like to go because it's a little bit alienating when I'm building houses and people aren't paying as much as property taxes that you might be paying.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say one more thing, and it kind of goes back to what the town attorney was saying, because when I saw this packet tonight, I was, I was a little confused because I don't see how you can, I can afford you an area variance when I don't have a subdivision plan. So, you know, because I don't know what I'm giving you, because I don't see, I don't know what, what the drawings say, right? So I was very confused by that, and my preference is exactly what the town attorney had said. I think the reset button needs to be hit, and we need to get a plan in front of us that, that we can thoroughly evaluate what these variances are, because I am not comfortable looking at a conceptual plan that's just up on a screen saying, "I'm going to give you 110 variances."
Understood. It's a discussion that I've had with town attorney over the past couple of days here, and we're trying to, you know, come up with the best solution. But we have asked applicant to submit a subdivision plan. Even with that subdivision plan, I'm going off topic a little bit here.
We didn't talk about that, Jim. Don't go off topic.
Okay. We can, we can speak to lot size, we can speak to road frontage, lot width, lot depth. Don't know that we can really speak to setbacks because we don't know where these buildings exist in the real world or where they're going to exist. I'm just going to say that I don't want to get into the weeds on it, quite frankly.
Yeah, and there seems to be a lot of drainage issues there, so I think that's going to impact the layout of the property. So hence why I want to see a map.
And applicant has a map. We're asking for a application to go along with that map. Can you switch back to the other one, please?
Sure.
I have a few comments. I spent a lot of time the last couple of days researching through this, looking for examples where this may have occurred before. Didn't find a ton, but found some interesting stuff. And first, I want to point out, if the board resolves to grant any of the variances, it is required of us to grant the minimum relief required, the minimum relief required. And that is, that burden is on the applicant to prove that the minimum relief is being asked for and that that's what we are granting. So just looking at lot size, right? R-40 requires 40,000 square foot lots. You're asking for 17,000. However, you have an alternate plan, and you've been on record at several meetings saying, "I could do this instead." In my mind, that creates a situation where the minimum relief is zero, because there is a way to develop the property with the R-40 zoning. So why would we grant any relief to lot size? I'm asking you.
I understand that you would prefer the single-family unattached, so you would grant the relief because you decided it's in the best interest of the town residents.
I am, I understand your comment, and I am unsure if what the final product ends up being factors into whether or not we're granting the minimum relief necessary.
If you look at it from the legal standard, you're right. If we come to the board and you say, "22 doesn't work, maybe 21. 21 doesn't work, 20." And we keep making lots bigger, eventually it's a point where we say, "No, no, we'll just stick with what we got." If it's, it comes down to that.
All right. The other interesting thing that I want to share with the board and the public that's gathered here, whether, because the zoning board is a, what they call quasi-judicial board, granting a variance, the granting of any variance sets a legal precedent, meaning if we grant these variances as an example, and we have a applicant come in with a very similar application, we would have a hard time backing off of that because we've set a precedent to say, "We are going to go ahead and grant variances for multiple lots, for non-conforming lots, and we're going to grant multiple variances per lot in order to make them conforming." So I want the board to consider that as we work through this process. Courts do give zoning boards great latitude to consider a decision's impact on precedent and its application to the variance of the standard, okay? If the approving of variance would undermine the existing zoning regulations by encouraging further deviations where no unique hardship exists and set a poor precedent for other property owners in the neighborhood, this can be considered detrimental to the neighborhood's Again, the, as I go through these standards, that is something that I'm going to consider. In addition, when I go through the standards and I look at substantial, when we say, "We need five variances per lot in order to make these conform to what you were trying to do," to me, that seems substantial. And I, I think that's a large hurdle that you will have the burden to overcome. Finally, in that same vein, typically, the category of area variance requested does not play a significant role in the zoning board's application of the statutory test. One potential exemption to this rule is a variance that will permit the creation of substandard lots, although such variances are granted from time to time, and there is case precedent that they are. Again, using that balancing test, whether or not it's detrimental to the neighborhood or not. But granted from time to time, the burden on the applicant to demonstrate its benefit appears heavier in cases which it seeks to create and develop non-conforming lots. So again, I think this goes back to applicant. The burden is on you to prove that the creation of these non-conforming lots is of greater benefit to the neighborhood than not, okay? Those are my comments.
Can we get a copy of those, Jim?
You sure can.
Thank you. I want to verify something. This isn't the direction I envisioned going, okay? Nice job, Miss Bell. You've practiced very well. It's ready to take the test.
Those weren't, those weren't my horse.
I do my own race. Nice job. Nice job. Credit hours at law school. It's, it's, this is an offering. This is an opportunity to say, no matter how we have to comport ourselves to make this happen, this is the offering. Somebody used an analogy earlier. I'll use the analogy of applying for a mortgage. First, you get a pre-approval. You get a feeling for whether or not the application be due or not. If the pre-approval looks good, then you go through, fill out all the paperwork, you try to get the mortgage commitment. All I'm looking for tonight, without a vote, is if it's not going to happen, or you're not inclined to do it, don't do it. We'll, we'll give us some clarity, we'll walk away, and we'll, we'll proceed to get cash homes. And we'll begin that subdivision process, we'll begin that application process, because without the zone changes, without the variance, that's all we have.
Understood. I appreciate those comments. I work with a lot of developers. The fastest to get to know is sometimes the better.
Sure.
So if it's that that you want to get to, that's fine. We are still, we still need to refer this to county. We still need to continue discussions next month. We'll keep the public.
But if I got a thumbs down, it would just determine, the variance request would be withdrawn, you don't have to vote it, we'll just, we'll just take. But this is more like an offering. Mr. Virginia put it very well. Do you want 24 plus or minus a couple of tasks, or do you want what I can do? And if you decide that it shouldn't be done during the variance process, then you and the town board can invite me to come back. But it would probably involve a zone change, which means you have to reconsider what was already voted on.
Understood. The, the reason for keeping the public hearing open is, I think the public better understands that now, and we will certainly continue to hear those comments if there is a strong desire to move one way or another. All as I'm, all as I'm stating is, I think it's, to go and do what you're doing with all the variances, the burden will be on you to prove that that is the most desirable outcome for, for the neighborhood. That was all my comment was for.
But if I can't meet that burden, and you're telling me I can't meet that burden, then I wouldn't try.
I don't know if you can or not. That's up to you.
I can only lift the weight that weighs so much. If I can't, if I can't meet that burden, then it's not, I'm not going to try.
So do we?
I guess, I don't, I don't want the board to venture into the weeds of telling the applicant whether or not they're of the opinion that he can meet a burden that you bear. That's, that would not be, that would be without precedent, I guess, is the best way to say that.
No, it's not their, it's not their role, and if they, if they wrongly decide it would matter, it would be, it would be challenged by anybody.
Well, or, or to tell you what you should be doing or not, that's not, I, I don't think that's appropriate.
I just, I'm just trying to be transparent with everybody, residents, people.
I understand.
Hopefully, you're going to pursue unattached, single-family homes or attached, single-family homes.
So we, you know, we can't move to a vote anyway without referring to county, because I would. You were going to say something?
No.
We have to have an application, don't we?
And we need an application as well. That's correct. Any other board comments this evening? Mr. Barnabon, any other comments from you?
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I have nothing to do with the heat in this room. I'm sure a lot of people might like to.
All right, we have made it to the end, thankfully. So Cheryl entertained the motion to close the...
Minutes? Did you do minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
The town of Van Buren Planning and Zoning Board Meeting.
Move.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion carried.